Okay, noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I will call tonight's meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I'm going to use my chairman's authority to make a statement prior to our first agenda item. As I alluded to at our December meeting, tonight I am announcing that I will not seek another term on the Board of Selectmen. Six years ago, the voters of Acton took a chance on me. I was 26 and relatively new to town at the time, and while I had been involved in the town through my work and volunteer activities, this was my first time at a town board or committee. I continue to be honored and grateful that the residents of Acton took that chance and gave me this opportunity to serve. While there have been some frustrating days, plenty of long nights, meetings that started on Monday but ended in the wee hours of Tuesday, and a lot of train dinners as I rushed from the commuter rail to Town Hall, it's all been worth it. This role has allowed me to get to know and work with our wonderful staff in town. I'm in awe of their dedication, commitment to our community, and their willingness to try new things and to always work harder to make our town better. I want to especially thank Heather, Cory, Eva, Steve Barrett, Brian, Selby, Doug, Lisa, and Mary Ann, all of whom have helped me tremendously during my time on the Board and always made sure I at least looked like I knew what I was talking about at Town meetings. Serving in this role also allowed me the privilege to work with our longtime Town Manager, Steve Ledoux, whose knowledge and dry sense of humor got me through many meetings and who was always there when I needed to vent and cool my head before responding to certain emails. I've also had the honor to finish my term with our new Town Manager, John Mangiardi, who I'm not convinced actually sleeps considering how much time he's put into the town since starting in July. And while it's meant that I spend most weeknights in Town Hall instead of at home, I have also enjoyed serving as liaison to many of our committees in town. Getting to know the many people in our community who volunteered their time for these committees has been a privilege, and I thank them all for their work. I am proud of what I've been able to work on and help accomplish during my time on the Board: hiring a new Town Manager, adopting immigration and environmental sustainability policies, switching to pay-as-you throw, shoring up the nursing service, master planning the property on Main Street, and much more. Over the past six years, we've accomplished a lot together. I've learned an incredible amount, and a lot has changed. Six years ago, I couldn't imagine I would know as much as I do now about natural gas leaks, the town's watershed, liquor license laws, or the myriad of other things we deal with as Selectmen. I also couldn't imagine then that I would meet the most perfect, most handsome man, that we would fall in love, and that we would be planning our wedding for this July. My life has grown and changed in immeasurable and wonderful ways, and now it's time for me to move on to the next phase of my life and to make way for new ideas and new energy on this Board. My time on the Board of Selectmen has been an incredible experience and one I won't forget, and I thank everyone in Acton for giving me this opportunity and for supporting me along the way. Thank you all very much. [applause] How did we learn tonight that I'm a crier? So, back to our normal agenda, we'll start with, as we normally do, Item 1, Citizens' Concerns.
Terrified to exist, West Acton. Thank you for your service, Katie, and for your heartfelt statement. I had a question, a couple of questions, and the first one is the Board of Selectmen goal, to get the Kelly's Corner funding as being the top goal, is that the goal, is that for the funding, or is that for selling this particular design? The reason I ask this is because I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it looks like town is putting forth a sales team to sell the design, and I'm concerned that the folks that are being recruited for the sales team don't seem to be able, so don't seem to be informed about the issues with the design that in particular Green Acton and other groups have. And so I'm wondering if the Board of Selectmen goal can be met by getting the design money, even if it's, we're not necessarily committed to this particular design, because one of the questions that we had at the meeting was, are you selling this design, or are you still taking input? Because we had thought that, we were told that the 25% design was just the 25% design, that it's early yet, John was telling us this, and that, and then now shift, it's now in a sales mode. So, that's my first question, whether the goal is for the funding, or whether the goal is to sell this particular design.
I'll say this, that the Board of Selectmen has been updated throughout on the design of Kelly's Corner project and continues and has voted to continue to support the project and the designs that we've been presented with. So, I think our goal is reflective of that, and our votes and statements at our meetings have been supportive of the design.
And so, at least my second question, whether or not the Kelly's Corner design funding is going to be presented as a separate item at Town Meeting, or whether it's going to be buried in with a bunch of other things?
I believe it'll be a separate item at Town Meeting, but we haven't finalized the warrant articles yet.
Because I'll be moving to separate that in some way, if it is not. And the second thing is about the, last thing, is about the West Acton sewer funding. It seems that that, whether that's going to be a separate vote as well, because I think that that's important to get, to see if the town supports that before we go spending more money on it, since we spent so much anyway. I mean frankly, the, I feel like we don't pay vendors to give us an RFP. We ask them to give us a proposal for free, so paying them a quarter million dollars, I think that should be discussed separately at the Town Meeting. And if it's not presented as a separate warrant article, I will be moving to separate that.
Again, we haven't finalized the warrant articles, but that is at least part of Enterprise Fund, which are typically separate articles in and of themselves, so.
Each one? Okay, thank you. And I did want to mention that you did the due process for immigrant work. I wanted to thank you for that. Thanks.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank Janet and Katie for their years of dedicated service to the town, and we'll certainly miss you and hope you're going to still be around to act as consultants. That said, my name's Dean Chotter. I reside at 81 Chotter Road. I retired in 2015 after 40 years of paid service to the town of Acton, serving for many years as Municipal Properties Director and Tree Ordin. During my paid service, I was privileged to work on many exciting projects for the town, including serving as Project Manager for the expansion of Town Hall, renovations and additions to the Memorial Library, the creation of the new public safety facility, and the early stages of obtaining a new senior center, among other projects. During my career, I had the opportunity to work in collaboration with town staff, committee members, and the general public. I look back at those interactions as some of the high points of my career. Since my retirement, I've served on the Senior Center Study Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, the trustees of the West Acton Citizens' Library, and the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. After long and careful consideration, I have decided to offer to continue my service to the town of Acton by running for Selectmen in the March 2019 election. I believe that I have a unique set of qualifications for the job of Selectmen. I have deep roots in the town, and I am the fifth generation of my family to live in West Acton. My wife Marsha and I raised our two sons on the last fragment of the family farm on Chotter Road. I graduated from Acton-Bloxbury in 1968. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Education and a Master's of Art and in Public Administration, and hold great respect for both of those career paths. I know from 40 years working in the trenches just what it takes to get public projects and programs accomplished. Most importantly, I'm eager and excited to serve as Selectmen, and I look forward to the campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Jim Snyder-Grant, 18 Half Moon Hill. You know, I'm usually here to ask the Board something, or harangue you about something. Tonight, I'm honored to be able to tell you that I just filed the nomination signatures for running for the Board. I'm looking forward to the campaign. I'm looking forward to the election. I think my only request tonight is if you have the names or contact information of civic groups or neighborhood groups, I really want to spend the next period of time, as much as possible, just talking to people, learning about the issues that, how people are thinking about the issues that face Acton. So I could, I could use your help in being in touch with all those groups, and happy to clear my calendar to be anywhere. Thanks for all your service, and I look forward to seeing what it's like from the other side of the table. Talk to you later.
Thank you, Jim. Kevin, you'll be able to come up with a...
Hi, I'm David Martin. I live at 71 High Street. Also, thank you, Katie and Janet, for all your years of service. I'll miss your presentations at Town Meeting. So I also wanted to declare that I'm running for Selectmen in the spring's election. I've lived in South Acton for over 30 years with my wife, Miriam Lezak, and our three daughters have gone through the Acton and AB school systems. I've been on SATSAC for a decade. Doesn't seem like it's been that long, but it has. Eight of those 10 years as Chair, the other two years as Clerk. I think I'm, you know, I don't go into the, you know, the election or the, you know, or my desire to become Selectmen with any particular agenda. I think I'm good at building consensus and good at getting things done, and so that's what I think is, you know, are my strong points in what I would run on. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Now might be a safe time, Kevin.
Good evening. Kevin Daigle, 929 Main Street. I will not be running for Selectmen. I just wanted to swing by because at the meeting last month, a decision was made about the CrossFit Reach Use Special Permit, and 20 days has gone really quickly with the holiday season, and I was just wanting to swing by to see if the Board would grant an extension on the appeal period for, for that appeal that I planned to file, so.
So Kevin and I talked briefly beforehand when I got here, and I explained I don't know all the details of the appeals process, and so I'm not sure that we're able to grant that tonight, but what we will do is that the Town Manager and Planning Director will, our Planning Department will reach out to you tomorrow and make sure you get in touch with them and figure out the process for that, and I'm sure we'll be able to resolve it that way.
That sounds great.
We will do that.
Thank you very much, Katie.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
You'll be missed.
Yeah.
Last person on the Board, I'd like to see you leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other citizens' concerns? All right. Seeing then, we will move on to the Chairman's update. Happy New Year to everybody. This past Saturday, we had our annual Budget Saturday where the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee got together and reviewed the budget and heard presentations from all of the departments in town. It was a success, and we were able to keep it closer to a Budget Saturday morning than the whole day, which was wonderful and much appreciated, I think, by everybody. So congratulations, Mr. Manager, for getting through his first Budget Saturday, and we look forward to the continued budget process. A couple upcoming events: the 17th Annual Martin Luther King Breakfast will be held at Congregation Bethel Laheem on Monday, January 21st, at 8:30 a.m. This year, the featured speaker will be local educator and activist Roland Gibson. If you haven't attended this event before, it's wonderful, and I recommend that you attend if you are able. This Thursday night is the public forum from the 348-364 Main Street Master Planning Committee on what we've been working on since the last public forum, and presenting a few recommended proposals and getting feedback from the public on that. So again, it's Thursday, January 10th, at 7:00 p.m. in this room, and I hope all of you can attend. If you're not able to and would like to submit comments, you can send those to the committee in, we have a meeting the following week, and we'll hopefully be making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen sometime in February. The Tanglewood Marionettes will be having a performance at the Recreation Center on Sunday, January 27th, at 1:00 p.m. It sounded very interesting, so if you've got little kids or just like marionettes, I hope you can stop by. And there is, we're still working out some of the details, but I want to note is we won't have, we'll only have a meeting shortly before it, but we are working on putting together the sidewalk forum that the Selectmen discussed earlier this fall, and it will hopefully be on January 30th, likely in this room, presumably at 7:00 p.m., but we will post all of those details when we have it. And that is my update, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. And thank you, members of the Board and members of the Finance Committee, for a great Saturday budget session, and thanks to all the departments and their hard work in preparing for that, and members of the public that attended too. It was nice to see you there. I just wanted to remind people that the Municipal Monthly Newsletter also appears as an Municipal Quarterly when it's timed just right, and this is one of those months, so look for that in your tax bill or on our website, and please provide some feedback if there's anything that you wish you saw on there, but we think it's a great way to reach out to the public. I wanted to recognize the Acton Fire Department for, they were awarded just at the end of the last year, two grants, $4,300 for student awareness of fire education, and $2,600 for senior safe grants. So it's great work by the Fire Department, Brent Carter takes the lead on that. Nice work, Brent. That's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay, up next is the update on the Acton-Bloxbury Farmers Market location, and I will kick that back to you, Mr. Manager.
So, thank you. So, the Director of the Acton-Bloxbury Farmers Market reached out to me a few weeks ago and let us know that the location, the market has been the last few years, may not be available this year, and they have asked for the town to help identify a potential new location if necessary. Deborah is here to perhaps share more on exactly what they're looking for, but the general sense was they were looking to have it either remain in West Acton, potentially at the Gardner Playground or Field, or have it right behind this complex on, in the back parking lot.
Deborah, do you want to come up and provide a little bit more?
Deborah Symes, Concord Road. Thank you, John. So Katie and Janet, you will be missed. Katie, you made me cry.
Oh, sorry.
First thing I want to do is thank you guys for accommodating us by holding this meeting, at least in part, around this issue, and thanks also to the Town Manager, who's been really responsive in a rather hurried timeframe on all this, because we just learned on the 21st of December that there was going to be an issue with Pearl Street, so it's been quick. The bad news is, well, let me say one more thing. I also want to acknowledge in front of the universe here that the town has been incredibly supportive of the farmers market over our first decade. We started planning in 2008, had our first season in 2009, and the town has just been fabulous, so I want also to say that out loud and to appreciate the town for that. It's my son's birthday, and we had plans for dinner at the Seaport, so I'm bolting at 7:30. I'm really, really, really sorry, but what I do want to do is introduce the members of our Board who are here, because they will be chit-chatting with you one after I bolt out the door, so immediately, will you guys raise your hands or something when I say your names? Joanne Basetta, Kenneth Coleman, who is also a longtime Board member, Missy Lapordo, who's been, I'm running out of saliva, sorry, been with us for a few years, Deb Clady, who's a relatively new person to the market, Deb Andell, who's been with us for a while, and then not on the Board, but Jen Campbell over there is the person who launched this thing, got the whole thing started way back, way back when. So, they'll be yakking away, I'm sure, after I go. So, I think you guys have this sort of original, like, we did kind of an emergency proposal after we first learned this information. We sat down, you know, the Saturday, the next day actually, and like just did a brain dump about every possible place in town that we could think of. We feel strongly that it would be far better for the market and probably for the community if it were sited on town-owned rather than on private property, which presents other hurdles. In that original document, we said, hey, the sort of best thing we can identify is the far western lot behind Town Hall and the library here. You guys have probably seen that document, that it lays all, you know, lays out our issues and what we were thinking at the time. And then subsequent to that, I think you have other materials that say, that reflect what we talked about. What day was that?
Sunday.
Sunday, thank you. Sunday when we met again. I'm going to say really quickly, and then you guys can sort of take over for me, that it seems potentially possible that we could stay on Pearl Street for one more season. The development that is proposed on Pearl Street has to go before ZBA for a special permit. I don't know how long that will take. I don't know when they would break ground once they get permission, because I don't have any idea what those timeframes, what those are like. If they didn't break ground before the end of our 2019 season, that would be perfect, because we could do one more year there and then have some breathing room to, you know, figure out and do planning and more consultation about what makes sense. So I think that would be our preference for this immediate year. As I said to you in those documents, we are operating under kind of a, the pressure of needing to let our farmers know, know later than February 1, whether there is going to be a market somewhere. We don't need to tell them the exact location yet, but we need to be able to say yes, because they do all their season planning starting quite soon. The second thing, I think in today's document that you may have seen is, you know, if we can stay at Pearl Street for one more year, awesome, provided that the Spiros will tolerate us for one more year. I think the second thing that we would like to look at is the feasibility of doing it at the backside of the Gardner Playground. We went and did a site walk and evaluated all the things we could think of about that site, and I laid out what we see as the sort of pros and cons in the documents that you have. We think that it would be, it has potential to be a wonderful long-term home for the market, and I think I also alluded, some folks in West Acton Business Committee are talking about sort of improving the playground or, you know, the whole area, that whole little Gardner area. So I think there's potential, whether it's for this year or for this year plus the future, I don't know. And then the third, sort of the third up, you know, our third choice at this point is to cite it back here as we, as we laid out in that document. So, my colleagues can entertain questions and help, you know, help keep this conversation going forward. Thank you so much again for having us and helping us sort this out.
Thank you, Deborah, and happy birthday, Noah. Okay, are there initial questions from members of the Board? Do you want to hear more information? I want to show reactions or questions, and otherwise I'll just ask if there are additional comments from the public. Okay, why don't I do?
I just, yeah, I just, obviously, I think we need to, optimal would be that they get to stay Pearl Street area for another year, but obviously we need a backup plan, and, you know, there, my question about, say, doing something here is whether the library people have been involved in talking about because of the potential for conflict between the populations that are sort of around, and especially if they want to have access to bathroom. I mean, they said they could have a portage on, but anyhow, but that's the only question that arose in my mind, and then also some talk about the big trucks that might have to go in West Acton if they had to move to the playground area. But I think a lot of that stuff is, we, you know, we can work it out. It just requires a little bit of planning, different kinds of planning, so anyhow, but I'm open to hearing what other people have to say.
I will say the Manager has talked to the Library Director about it. I know, you know, we haven't had time to talk to the trustees or anything like that, but he has talked to the Library Director, and it did seem feasible, unless I'm mischaracterizing that.
Given the hours of operation of the library and the proposed hours for the market, it wouldn't necessarily conflict. So, I think the only issue remains is access to the building and whether that would create additional resource needs from us, whether they need to use this building or the library. They're not usually open, and if they were to be open, that would require us to either be there or clean up afterwards, so. But that's, that's not really a major issue, it's just something we need to figure out.
Right, okay. Peter, you have something?
No, I don't really have any comments. She mentioned, Deborah mentioned, you're looking for town-owned property. A street is, I mean, Pearl Street is a public way, right? I know they use a little corner of it for music, but that's, that's a public way. I mean, you could, you could set up on another street. I'm thinking of Arlington Street behind, you know, between Central and Spruce Street. I mean, I don't, I don't think that restaurant's open Sunday mornings, and is it Tables and Teapots? I mean, you probably have considered all these places, but...
So the, I will just say, the reason that we chose Pearl Street in the very beginning is because, because it is literally the only street in town, apparently, that has, except for the Spiros driveway, no other access needs. Like, there's no other house that has a driveway, there's nothing else going on in that street except for the Spiros driveway. I'm unaware of any, like, there are businesses in that, I know the stretch you're talking about, there are businesses in that stretch that would absolutely be impacted, so we, we didn't really look at other street sightings, you know, for those kinds of reasons, because obviously who wants their access cut off for six or five hours, whatever it is?
Okay, I mean, the only other thing I'd mention is Kathy Folkmann had some, she gave us a memo that you've probably seen about circulation of traffic on Sunday morning. She had a solution that sounded fine to me. I guess we have a meeting on the 28th. Would that, I don't know if you could continue to meet with the Town Manager and work out whatever issues there might be about the back parking lot and access to buildings, you know, to store your stuff or be able to set up or whatever. That'd be the only question I would have, is it makes sense to talk to the, see if we can, do we need to resolve those issues, and with the 28th, if we made a decision on the 28th, meet your deadline, I guess.
Yeah, I think it sounded like the, they need to know by February that the market is happening, so I think we could make a decision tonight, potentially, if we felt comfortable that we would support it happening somewhere, and then maybe delegate to the Town Manager to work out the details and bring something back, and that could happen either in the 28th thereafter, or, you know, there's a variety of things we can do, but, yeah. Joan?
Do you have any idea how many parking spaces are needed?
What I told the Town Manager is that probably on average, we are in the 30 to 35 neck of the woods. If it's a really high census day, then it might be 50. But again, people come and go. It's not like they come and stay there for three hours, so it's, you know, it's a very dynamic need, if that helps you.
John?
Yes, with Deb, before you go, with your, with your first choice of having Pearl Street for at least one more year, have you had any discussion with the atheist realty people as to what their timeline is for moving forward?
I have not talked with Zohar about, you know, his potential timeline. I don't think, I think it's a little hard to predict, given that they have to go through the ZBA, and I don't know how long that process will take if it does go forward. Mr. Tias has been very, you know, verbally, he's been very supportive of the notion of the market staying on Pearl Street. I don't think in the long run that's feasible, because for another, another reason, there's going eventually to be another house with a driveway on Pearl, apparently.
Yes.
Pardon me. So he's been verbally supportive. I think the thing I said to the Town Manager is that if we were going to be able to do this one more season on Pearl Street, I think from our point of view, the important piece would be that if the town were able in some way to compel the developer, Mr. Tias, to basically guarantee, as I said in that document, that the site, the construction site, if they break ground during our season, would be very safe and all buttoned up.
Basically to hold off on the development until the fall.
Well, our season runs through the third week in October.
Yeah.
So I don't know that anybody would want to wait that long to break ground if they could in 2019. I have no idea, but the point is, if they don't break ground, you know, problem solved. If they do break ground, then we, one of the questions we have for the town is whether there's some way for the town to, through the ZBA perhaps, I don't know what the path would be, but to insist that the developer make, just make sure that it's going to be a safe site, so that if we do have the market there, that, that people aren't going to be at any risk.
We're running on a short timeline. We need to...
In terms of, yes, we're going to have a market running under a really short timeline, yeah.
Thank you, Deborah.
You may go.
All right. Other comment, yes?
Yeah, just a quick question. I was wondering if the train station main parking lot was considered? It's large, it's not really used on Sunday morning.
Yes. Yes, we can ask.
There are no subscription spaces that apply on Sunday morning.
Somebody talk about.
Anyway, it's just an idea. It's a big space that's got, can be arranged so that part of it could be used for people coming to the farmer's market, park, it could be used for parking trucks and setting up tents and, anyway, it's town-owned.
Right. Yeah, and one of the thoughts, again, if, if we're able to continue it perhaps on Pearl Street for years, it gives it another year to, to look more thoroughly at options like that, so, but that's, that's an interesting one. Thank you. Yes?
Just a bit of history. I was on the Board of Selectmen when the farmer's market was proposed. I thought that was the most wonderful idea. And there was a lot of opposition from Town Hall. Staff said that it would be too much work, there'd be safety problems, they have to clean up, et cetera. And we've had this idea that if we sent in enough letters, that maybe it'd be more work to process the letters, and we were right. So I just want to thank Town Hall for shifting their, their position. I also want to make the point that they closed Sturo Drive on Sundays. They closed Newbury Street, they closed Hanover Street, and those folks have driveways and can't get out, and that's just too bad. That it's a community-oriented thing that they can participate in a process to object to, but these places have street closures for a good reason, and I think that that's part of the, the developer knows this, the property owner knows this, and they are asking for a special permit, which can only be granted if it is not injurious to the community. And the condition process could include a condition that they understand that, you know, the farmer's market is there, or, you know, whatever words. I wanted to make note that Arlington doesn't have any shade. That was one of the requirements, or not requirements, but preferences for the people that are going to be on their feet for a good part of the day. And the, I love the idea of South Acton Village getting some business since we approved way too many conversions from commercial to residential, and that's a whole other story. But I'll fight you to the death to keep it in West Acton. I'm just kidding. But, so I like that idea, but also it's pavement and no shade, again. So I urge you to keep it in West Acton. I love the Pearl Street because there's plenty of parking around it. Gardner Field, if that's chosen, I hope that all of the spaces out in front are turned into handicap-only spaces because the distance to get from the street and the limited number of spaces, I feel like at least five, six spaces would be needed, given the amount of parking that's around Pearl Street. There is so much parking that's available. I know that my, my dad offers his driveway if people need to park within a few feet of the market. So, thank you very much. Sorry, I didn't mean to, the death thing.
I'm Lou Thatcher, 124 Prospect Street. My hope would be that you could stay on Pearl Street at least one more year. It's an excellent location. I am a member of the West Acton Village Merchants Association, and we have had very great success using Gardner Field for our Oktoberfest this past fall. So I think that would be, I was just thrilled to hear that as an option. I think that's a good point. And also Arlington Street, we have had, I think, Oktoberfest there, too. So that, in that one section of Arlington Street, and that kind of worked, except for the shade, but the businesses are not open on Sundays. One is a hair salon, the bank, and the condos there in the corner, they have access on Central Street, so that's, wouldn't be a problem. The two hair salons, and neither one of them are open on Sundays. And the train station, to me, would not be a good option. No shade, asphalt, hot. And it gets hot at the farmer's market. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Manager?
So I think there are a couple of strong possibilities that are developing. I think that staying where it is for all or even most of the season would be the easiest way to transition to a new place. So I think if the board is willing to take a position, maybe at the next meeting, on a potential backup location that we would be willing to put in play, should that place become unavailable, whether it's on day one or halfway through the season, I think that would be a good way to approach, making sure that we can support what, I think, what the group wants to do, but not limit it, and allow them to continue considering options. Because I think it is early, and I think as long as we can say, we will give you a backup, they can tell the farmers to start planting, and we can work on the details between now and then.
I think that makes sense. And one that I had is, you know, we, we're not able to say the ZBA will include a condition as we're not the ZBA, but I wonder if this board could write a letter to the ZBA related to that permit to, to say that we support a condition related to the farmer's market and providing access for this 2019 season, or something like that. So, and again, maybe that's something we, we discuss or have a draft of to review at, at the next meeting in January, if people are supportive of that. Janet?
I mean, you know, I, I would suggest with regard to the ZBA matter that maybe the town manager could talk to the planning department, see where it stands, and, you know, sort of what the options are for the board. If the board is, you know, obviously, I think that the current site is the ideal site, and to the extent that the farmer's market continue to operate there, that would be the best, but of course, there's this concern about safety, and we can't authorize a farmer's market that's going to be in a place that's going to pose some sort of safety hazard to the public that's going to be gathering there. So, yeah, it would, it would be helpful to understand better what the timeline is. I don't even know where, where it is in the works, just the, the site, the permit process, you know.
I don't believe, I don't, I don't either. I mean, I think it's, they've had discussions with the design, designer review board, but I don't believe they've done more than that.
Yeah, I think I, I, yeah, I think that I missed that meeting, but, yeah, I think, but I don't know, sometimes the DRB meets with, with developers before they've even formally applied with the ZBA. So it would be sort of helpful to have a, a bead on the timeline and then also understand, you know, to the extent to which a letter from the, the board would, to the ZBA would hold any water. I mean, we shouldn't be sending a letter if it's absolutely going to have no, no, it can't be taken into consideration, but, you know.
Yeah, I think, I'd rather focus on identifying what we're, what we're able to do rather than what you'd ask another group to do. And that, we can get to that when, when it happens. But I think if we have, I've distributed the information from the farmer's market to staff both the first proposal, which was just behind Town Hall, and then the second proposal, which included a few other spaces, and I've gotten feedback. I think I'd like to have a little bit more time to get that feedback together. And also, if it were to be proposed behind this building, I think we, we would also want to reach out to some people in the neighborhood ahead of the 28th and just give them a chance to see what, what's being proposed. But I think we could, like, we could plan to do that at the 28th is, we have a few weeks to figure a few things out and bring you a proposal, if that's what you're interested in, see.
Yeah, and the Rec Commissioners are meeting tomorrow night, and they do have a standing agenda, and I'm related to playground, so I could bring it up as part of that, just to get their feedback on using Gardner. Okay, so are people generally comfortable with that? We'll come back with some proposals for potential backup plans and have a discussion at the 28th with the hope of voting something, whether it's the, having a backup plan or, you know.
Sure, as long as that meets their timeline. I mean, we could say tonight to you that we will have a farmer's market somewhere in town if they need that, I suppose, and then decide where if we have to, you know, afterwards, but.
I guess one question I have for the group, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Is that, is a, would it be useful, or would it, would it be possible to start out on Pearl Street and then just tell people, as of this date, we're going here, rather than try to plan for day one?
I, Kenneth Coleman. I think it'd be very difficult to move mid-season, just because we'll have set up, we'll, people know where we are, and then to move, that could be difficult. But as far as the February 1st, all we need to know is we're going to have a market, and then we can find out where it's going to be. But I, I mean, if it turns out not having a market, or we have to move in the middle of season, of course, we'd rather move in the middle of season, but I think that would be not a, a very good choice as far as keeping continuity and keeping people knowing where we are.
Okay, so let's, I, I think then, let's plan for the 28th to have a vote on, we'll have a farmer's market with this as, you know, with a backup, with getting additional information on what those backup options are, and hopefully be able to vote one on the 28th, and then, and then, and as well as an update on the ZBA process and timeline as well. Because if it turns out, you know, it sounds like nothing's going to happen before the fall, I mean, we could still have the backup, but, you know, then, then we would know that at least, and it hopefully won't be an issue. Peter?
No, I would just ask you to explore all those options with the, with the farmer's market people, including the train station. I mean, I've, I've heard the comment, but I go over to the main or farmer's market on Saturdays. It doesn't have any shade at all. It's very popular and successful, so, and the playground. I have concerns. I'd like to hear what you feel about, you know, using turf to drive trucks over and, and all that, so, but all of those options, and if there's anyplace else in town that might work better. I'd ask you to report back on that.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, then we will move on. Okay, so the next item is an update on the Acton Leadership Group. Mr. Manager, you want to start that off?
Yes, oh, great. So the Acton Leadership Group, as you know, is comprised of two representatives from the board, two representatives from the school committee, and two representatives from the finance committee and staff for those groups. And we started meeting in, actually, a few days before my first day in June. I went to my first meeting, and we've been meeting monthly since that time, and the timing of this budget, you know, we presented to you a few weeks ago. The superintendent produced a preliminary budget a few weeks ago, and they're producing or presenting another update to that later this week. And as those things have been happening, we've been looking closely at the projected revenues and other issues that are within the leadership spreadsheet plan. We did provide a packet, I meant, we did provide a copy of the cover sheet to the draft financial model. The yellow highlighted column is showing where the projections are as of today. And with the budget that I presented to you on the 17th and the schools' budget, the deficit is in the 761,000 range, but there are some adjustments that we expect to have to that number with this week, which would get it closer to the half a million range or 550 range. And so I think the, the work between now and when you adopt the budget and then town meeting considers a budget is to identify how to plug that gap, and a few different sources have been considered, one being reserves, which, as I mentioned in my presentation a few weeks ago, I really would like to reduce the community's reliance on the use of reserves to operate the town. So I think that's a discussion that we hoped you'd have tonight, and the finance committee is having tomorrow night.
Yeah, and so, and Joan, feel free to jump in if I'm forgetting anything. So a couple of the options that we talked about, the schools are, the superintendent is presenting proposed updates to his budget to the school committee on Thursday, and those proposals would decrease their assessment to Acton by around $200,000. And some of that, there's a variety of things that go into that, some of which does include a little bit of increased use of their E and D, which is their version of, of reserves, essentially. And worth noting that the plan right now that you see in front of you does include using all of the unused levy capacity. Last year, ALG had talked about, at the time, there was about $900,000 of unused levy, and we had talked about sort of phasing it in over three years, where we used $300,000 last year, and then 300 this year, and 300 in FY '21. So this includes using all of the $600,000. Our thought, and one proposal that was made, was using all of the unused levy this year, in part because the town is covering the Minuteman Building Project debt for this year out of our general fund and not going for a debt exclusion for that, in major part because the finance committee wanted to wait and do a debt exclusion that would potentially include everything, the Minuteman project, the new twin school project, and a fire station, if we go forward with all of those. So that is about $285,000, so pretty close to that extra, kind of $300,000 of unused levy. So there's some feeling of using that extra unused levy for this one year to cover the Minuteman Building Project debt, and then reducing our overlay by $150,000. No, yes, $150,000, and that would leave about $400,000. And so we would increase the use of town reserves by $400,000, so that would be 1.7 million. That's the kind of option that I felt most comfortable with, and I think, you know, to me, was the schools sort of kicking in their share of, you know, decreasing their budget, using a little bit more of their E and D, the town kicking in our share of using more reserves and reducing our overlay, and the finance committee being, you know, game and using an extra $300,000 of the unused levy. Obviously, we had to take that back to our boards, and the finance committee wasn't, the two members of the finance committee weren't necessarily completely on board with that option, so they also want to discuss using, not using the $300,000 of unused levy and using an additional $700,000 in reserves, which would bring our reserve use up to $2 million. So there are obviously options in between that. Those were the two that we had kind of agreed to bring back to, to our respective boards, us tonight and the finance committee tomorrow night, to get a sense of, of where our groups are on really the main question. I think the schools, unless the school committee has a negative reaction on Thursday night, I think that should be fine. We're comfortable with, with the overlay reduction, so it's really kind of that $700,000 in unused levy and reserve deficit, or $700,000 deficit that we have to figure out of using unused levy or, and/or reserves, or some sort of other option if, if people have it. So, reactions, Janet?
What are, what's the FinCom members' reason for not wanting to use all of the unused tax levies because of this plan to roll it out gradually, or they'd rather have this much larger chunk to deal with in some other fashion than use it by using some, and, you know, did, has anybody done the calculations about the impact on sort of the average tax bill if you don't use the, all of the untax, the unused levy?
Yeah, we didn't get into that. That would be good to do, to show that number. I mean, I think my sense was, the reaction was, you know, it's a decision of whether to take the additional $300,000 out of reserves or, you know, putting it to the citizens through our tax rate. So, you know, they, they're, you know, again, they were bringing it back to the finance committee to get a sense from them, so they haven't, they weren't kind of upset either way, but I think they did see it as that question. I think we tried to point out that, you know, our original thought was to do it as a debt exclusion, which would have been, you know, taxing the citizens for it. So, you know, it's not much different from that, outside of it being time-limited in a debt exclusion versus not. So, you know, I think we felt like it, it was really in, in line with that idea and tied well to the Minuteman Building Project, but I don't know that they were convinced, they were at least were not convinced completely by that argument, so. And we'll see, they haven't had their meeting, their meetings tomorrow night, so, yeah.
I, well, because I don't get all the details from ALG meetings, because I haven't been going to the meetings, um, but, I mean, I know one of the issues was the assessment for the middlesex retirement, but then, and also I gather there was reduced new, new business or something. There was, yeah, there were, I just gathered that we're sort of in a pinched place right now, in part because of some unexpected things that didn't turn out, or, well, the middlesex thing really was screwed up everybody, but the, the less-than-robust, I guess, new business was, was another matter, so, okay. I just wanted to clear up what the... source was of why we're in this position of.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, we're in a pretty good, as you know, position, when we're talking about $700,000 difference in early January than we frequently are, so it's honestly.
Well, I know, I gather, I think that the town manager worked very hard with town staff to also kind of control what the asks were, or what the modified asks were, so, you know, we saw a lot of numbers where, oh, this was the asking, this is what the budget is going to cover, and, you know, substantial drop, so. I, I'm more inclined to go your route and just use the full levy. I don't see the point of sort of holding back and then having this enormous, well, to me, enormous, big number to, well, to cover with reserves, which, you know, FinCom has also been telling us they don't want us to use reserves for, so if we're going to start on a new route, you know, and comply with some aspect of FinCom's recommendations, I'd rather, you know, do that, the, you know.
Yeah, and I will say, that's probably, you know, your earlier comments about the Minuteman, or the Middlesex assessment, and the town manager keeping the budget very tight, I think, and the schools' budget being a much lower assessment than we've seen in recent years, I think are why part of the conversation right now is not around asking either entity to cut their budgets, which has frequently been a request in the past, and it honestly didn't come up at all, really, is a question of where do we take this $300,000 from. So I think that's a positive thing, and a testament to both the superintendent and the town manager for the thoughtful budgets that they put forward. Yes, Peter?
$6.5 million for OPEB, is that what the schools are putting into OPEB?
No, that's what we put in, and that's the level we've been at for a number of years now.
Okay. And so, you're talking about going to $2 million for town reserves, and that would be out of free cash?
$2 million would be if we reduce the unused levy by $300,000, and yes, that's our free cash.
Okay.
Reserves, I mean.
And if I remember right, our free cash is about 4.8 or something?
Well, there's $2 million in stabilization and 2.5.
Oh, so that's counting the $2 million that's in stabilization?
Correct. And then there's the Acton portion of AB's E and D, excess and efficiency. That, it's tough, because that's, you know, it's hard now that we're fully separate entities, and those aren't necessarily always looked at by, you know, the bond agencies as part of our reserves. We try to pitch it that way, but.
Okay, well, yeah, but, all right, so, I mean, basically, you're talking about town reserves, you're looking at free cash and the stabilization fund, that's the town's reserves.
Yeah.
Okay. Would we still be within the FinCom's percentage, preferred percentage of reserves, if we took the extra money into this?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think that's true. Did you want to add something?
Just that the proposal is just to use free cash, not to use a stabilization.
Right. Joan?
So basically, what we have to come up with, in terms of the shortfall, is about $760,000, and where that gets?
700.
700?
Yeah.
Okay. And.
Or, excuse, well, yeah.
And this would include the warrant article for the Sub One Engineering and Design Funds?
Yes.
And the sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. And was there any talk yet from Steve, from the finance department, as to the replenishment of reserves? Is income running in excess of projections?
Well, in the current fiscal year, we're closely monitoring expenses and planning to ensure that there's a turnback, but we can't count on it until it happens.
And historically at ALG, we've looked at the history of reserve replenishment, between the two entities, but that includes what the schools turn back into their E and D, so it doesn't go into town reserves, has been around $2 to $3 million, I would say more heavily on the school side in recent years, and we've seen lower turnbacks in the more recent years on both sides, but.
Yeah. What I was asking, when we, when they budget a year, when they project revenues a year in advance, those are conservative revenue projections, and we had a good run where the actual revenues well exceeded those projections. How, and I know it's slowed down a fair bit, is there any sense this year as to whether those, the actual tax revenues are exceeding the earlier revenue projections?
No, our new growth number has not increased it, we've actually leveled it from what we got last year, and we're not projecting a significant increase, so, and I think the additional revenue wouldn't be available for appropriation.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm just talking about the replenishment, if we're going to potentially draw down as much as $2 million of the 2.6 million in free cash that we have, what might we anticipate in terms of a replenishment of that amount when we get final numbers, when FY '19 closes on June 30?
This year, we return just under $400,000.
Was that in turnbacks?
Yeah.
What I was asking was, was rev, was actual revenue?
That includes both, revenue and expenses, that's the total.
It was only down to 400.
Right.
So I think, right, so we're not in a position to project a significant surplus in revenues this year.
So that's going to really, if we take as much as $2 million out of free cash, that's going to really drain it down, and if we get it at 400?
I'd be comfortable using less, part of, I'd be more comfortable using less.
Yeah, well, it's hard, you know, we haven't had an override since 2005, and we've done a, you know, the staff has done a, personnel has done a terrific job in keeping this whole going.
And there's always X-factors, right? I mean, if the Main Street property, some of the proposals anticipate funding from, for purchasing back that, purchasing that property, if we moved forward with one of those at town meeting, who knows what the timing on that would be, so there could be, you know, a potential one-time, you know, turn, or kind of increase in funding revenue, essentially, that wasn't anticipated, but those are the things you really, you know, can't plan for, and shouldn't assume, because we don't know what that will be, we don't know what the committee's going to recommend, what the board is going to recommend, what town meeting's going to vote, the timing of when all of that would happen, so those things are very up in the air. And I also, you know, one of the finance committee's recommendations and their point of view was to tie reserve use to capital projects, and we can clearly tie this 1.7 in reserves to various capital projects, but honestly, the $2 million less so, and I'm not sure we could say that we have $2 million worth of capital projects that we could tie to that use of reserves. So that's another factor that I think is in favor of trying to keep the reserve use lower. So our goal tonight is to get a sense of this board about what I think our preferred option would be, but also, you know, we have to wait and see what the finance committee discusses tomorrow night. We have an ALG meeting.
On the 17th.
On the 17th, to follow up.
Is that meeting at the, the ALG meeting on the 17th, is that a morning meeting, or a?
It's a morning meeting, yeah.
What's the deadline at which we have to vote the budget?
28th.
The 28th, our next, your next scheduled meeting, the 28th.
Yeah, I mean, you can always.
You have to recommend it, you have to turn it on 12:00.
Yeah, well, we have, in the timeline, that should be the 28th, you may have an extra day or two, but there's no meeting.
Yeah, no, we would vote our recommended budget on the 28th. I mean, you know, that's that $35 million number, you know, we're not always settled on how we're paying for that by the 28th, and that's, you know, ALG can continue, obviously, the discussions beyond that, and that doesn't require necessarily a vote of the board's segment, but we do want to get the boards, you know, sense on preferred uses, and whether that's leaning more towards using increased use of levy capacity versus reserves, I think would be the major question. So, Janet?
Well, you already, I already gave you my position, so, yeah, and absent any change in what the finance department sees as the replenishment issue, which for years, Steve Noon was saying doom and gloom, we're going to spend down our reserves if we keep going this way, and then all of a sudden, the replenishment seemed to become more robust, and he finally got persuaded that it wasn't doom and gloom, and then the latest is that it's not so robust, and so we really have to sort of curb our tendency to use reserves to fill in the gaps in the budget, as opposed to using it for capital, so I'm fine with your proposal.
Peter, just general sense, more reserves, more unused levy, put it that way to everybody.
Well, I thought you were talking about using up the whole $600,000.
Well, that's what, well, if we did that, we would only use 1.7 in reserves, but that's what we're saying the.
Instead of $2 million?
Right.
Okay. Huh. Which would keep the tax increase down lower, if you don't use the unused levy, you know?
Right.
Right. It's already at 4%, 3.9%.
Well, this is, yeah, I mean, also, in fairness, when we set the rate, it's usually different, we're about to do a five-year revale anyways, so that will, the valuation number will change. I think Marie was saying at the last ALG meeting, that originally we had been, with the budget numbers from last year, projecting the change in the tax bill to be like 3.6%, but when we set the tax rate, it was actually 3.12%, and that's because there was, you know, there's increase in the valuation. You know, we can't project that out until we actually do it, so this is, what I would say is probably, you know, worst-case scenario. I don't want to quote me on that, but.
I don't know, I want to hear what John and Joan have to say.
No, I would be on board with Janet and Katie, and use the remainder of the untaxed levy. That would bring us about $600,000, an additional $300,000 from what we had protected, and then offset that against, that saves $300,000 of free cash.
Yeah, so we would be at 1.7 of free cash, and every other number on here would, and the school budget down a little bit, and the other numbers would stay the same. Joan?
Yeah, I have a question for John. Did you think that was too much?
The, I was less comfortable going up to $2 million in reserves. I think the 1.7 number is, I mean, if you look at last year, we used 2.3, and if we were to go down to 2.7, 1.7, I think it's a nice gradual trend in that direction, and hopefully we can continue to reduce our reliance, so that we can use reserves for what they're intended for, for a rainy day, or for capital, rather than for operating the town.
So you're, so you lean more towards that, or using the unused levy? Okay.
Yeah, I guess I do agree with that, on the theory that you shouldn't be using up one-time available reserves to fund ongoing operating costs, so I'm okay with using the levy.
Okay, excellent, thank you, everybody. We'll, like I said, see what finance committee discusses tomorrow night, and we've got an ALG on the 17th, and I'm sure we'll report back sometime after that. Anything else on that, or?
No, thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. I'll read through these, please say hold if you have anything to hold. Number three, meeting minutes, December 10th and 17th, 2018. Number four, executive session minutes, December 10th and 17th, 2018. Number five, accept gift recreation apartment, a gift totaling $1,500 from Insulet Corporation to support the 2019 Summer Concert Series and Events. Number six, accept gift recreation apartment, a gift totaling $500 from Concord Tea Cakes to support production costs for the 2019 Summer Concert Series. Number seven, accept gift recreation apartment, a gift totaling $1,000 from Digital Federal Credit Union to support production costs of the 2019 Summer Concert Series. Number eight, accept gift recreation apartment, a gift totaling $1,500 from Middlesex Savings Bank to support production costs for the 2019 Summer Concert Series. Number nine, accept gift recreation apartment, a gift totaling $3,000 from Roche Brothers to support the 2019 Summer Concert Series and special events. Number 10, accept gift recreation apartment, a gift totaling $1,500 from Emerson Hospital to support the 2019 Summer Concert Series and Events. Number 11, accept gift recreation apartment, a gift totaling $3,000 from Enterprise Bank to support the 2019 Summer Concert Series and Events. Number 12, accept gift community services coordinator, a gift totaling $1,500 from the Lions Club for distribution at the discretion of the community service coordinator. Number 13, request disposal of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Number 14, right-of-way street cut permit, 315 Arlington Street.
Move to approve consent agenda items three through 14.
Janet moves, and Joan seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much to the organizations and businesses in town for very generous donations. All right, and with that.
Move to adjourn.
Do you want to adjourn? Janet moves, Joan seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, thank you very much.